But thank you so much for being here. This is a great day for Dickinson, and I'm so glad that you came here to be a part of it and become educated about these fantastic people who have come here and they're willing to take care of us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. And let me introduce myself. My name is TJ Alts. I am the owner and executive editor and lead janitor for I-45 Now. Behind the camera for us is Paul Cater-Dedon. He's our production manager. First, let me give a hand again to Dawn and the chamber staff. You heard her talk about it. I say staff, it's all volunteer effort, I should weigh. And the Dickinson Chamber, what, four, five years ago, three years ago, even less than that, had come about as some folks caring. You're gonna hear a lot of questions today about business aspects of things, since this is a chamber forum. We appreciate you coming out here on a workday here, and we're glad, and Keith and his family for allowing us to use this facility. It's a great facility, and it's a big asset for the city of Dickinson. So, let's give a hand to the chamber staff again. If you would, give yourselves a hand, too. The fact that you're here shows that you care about your community. We're glad to have you here today. Now, you may have seen us huddled over here in the corner. It was not a prayer circle, although we were praying when Ms. Barber was doing the prayer there. Thank you very much. But what we were doing was drawing. And I'm gonna explain the format. This is not a debate, by the way, and this is not the traditional forums you may have seen over the years where everyone only gets 60 seconds to talk and a 30-second rebuttal. This is an interview style. The idea is to give each of these candidates a chance to express their views, their policy positions, and opinions on issues facing the community. They will all address the same questions, but we're not so rigid in that a question may come from an answer one of the candidates gives here today, so we can get either clarification or other candidates to respond to things throughout the day, throughout the session. At the end, each of the candidates will have two to three minutes to give their final pitch to you. We know early voting already got underway, but we did not want to interrupt the chamber's regular meeting to do this. And I know some folks had some consternation about making reservations and ordering and coming in the middle of the day. It is free on I-45 Now. We are also providing it to the chamber in any form they want, and John's shooting for the chamber as well back here. If you can't find this forum to be able to listen to the candidates, then we're sorry, we'll take away your voter registration card. No, we won't do that. Now, a bit of business before we get going here. How many of you have your cell phones here with you today? How many of you turn them off? Good, because if we hear a phone ring, it's a $50 donation to the Dickinson Chamber of We will just confiscate your phone. Dawn's asking you to turn your phones on now. No, we do ask you, go ahead, and if you don't know how to silence your phone or anything, if it does go off, please just turn it off right away. And so, do that now. So, why don't we get underway here today? Again, give a hand to our candidates here today, because they are coming in during the workday as well. We did do a drawing. All the drawing did is decide who gets the first question and who gets to pick what order they go in at the end and their final pitch to you. And I will introduce, this is how, we're gonna go down the row here. Running for position six, the incumbent, William King. His challenger, H. Scott Aplley. Running for position two, we have the incumbent, Bruce Henderson. The challengers, Kevin Edmonds and Sean Skipworth. We should point out as well that position four incumbent, Wally Dietz, is here. He's not participating because he is unopposed in the election. He will make a pitch to you at the end for maybe future votes or the like. Congratulations on your reelection, by the way, we should point out to you now, Wally. So, we appreciate the time. So, let's go ahead and get going in this. And when we did do the drawing, Mr. Edmonds, you drew the number one, so you get the question first here. Walking up the stairs here at this great restaurant, there's a line outside that said "The Harvey Flood Line." Here we are, coming up on two years after, by the way, the microphones need to be turned on here. After two years here, there are still homes empty. Folks have not been able to move back home. There's still flood mitigation issues and the like. What, if elected to council, what's gonna be your number-one Harvey recovery issue that you would address?
I think the number-one Harvey mitigation issue to address is business. And I know that there are a lot of people still out of their houses, but I think bringing business in will help encourage people to come back to the city, to spend their money here and enjoy the life that they had before Harvey.
All right. And up next, the same question, Councilman King.
I think my policy would be to continue to do what we're doing with the City Council and the Mayor of the city of Dickinson, working with HGAC, working with GLO, to ensure that we receive CDBG funds for our city, as well as the Hurricane Harvey home repair for our citizens, to continue to identify the projects through the public administration funding for our street restoration, continue to make sure our citizens are informed and educated to what programs are available to them to help them and assist them, to maintain a closeness with our citizens, as well as our businesses to be restored, to encourage our economic development, to attract businesses to the city of Dickinson, to fill in those vacancies. Yes, we do have homes that are vacant, homes that are for sale, homes that are yet in mitigation. I believe there's hope after Harvey. And I believe by putting me back at City Council, position six, we will continue to build and to work with the relationship building, as well as restoration, for the city of Dickinson.
Councilman Henderson, your answer to that, the number-one priority for you if reelected?
I do always hate to fall on Councilman King. He's amazing at these things. Harvey was a very unique situation that I pray our city never sees again. What we need, what we are concerned with is the basic flooding that comes through our city on a regular basis. You know, a five-inch rain should not be even encroaching on people's property. We've done many projects in the last year. Is this thing still on?
Yeah.
Okay. We're continuing many of them. As Councilman King also said, we're working with GLO and FEMA and HUD and many other organizations to increase the funding that's available to the city, to continue these projects, to improve the drainage throughout the city, all the way through all the subdivisions, the neighborhoods. We worked getting the desnagging program through the Dickinson Bayou, which the entire purpose of that is to improve conveyance. We're also working on trying to get access to be able to get up into the tributaries, again, to improve conveyance of water. If we can't get it out of your neighborhood, if we can get it out of your neighborhood, but then it goes to the bayou and it can't get away, it doesn't do us any favors. We gotta work on that, too. While I'm not happy about Harvey in general, but it did bring Dickinson to the forefront to a lot of different organizations that didn't pay a lot of attention to us historically, i.e. the state, the governor's office, a lot of the county commissioners' court, where we have a lot more attention to us now. I've been asked many times relative to potentially dredging operations in the Dickinson Bayou. There's no question, that's outside of Dickinson Council's pay grade to make any effect on that. However, we have the capabilities now and we have the attention of other government entities that do have that possibility to make these things happen. So, there's never a short answer to this question. This is about a two-hour-long conversation.
And we're gonna have plenty to discuss on this as well, so.
I'm gonna move along. Thank you both, all very much.
Sean Skipworth. You pick either mic. You're good. There you go.
So, I think that, I agree with.
Bring the mic a little closer.
A little closer, okay. I don't normally have to talk that loud. So, I agree with what many people are saying. I touched on a couple of points, though. As you drove over here, you see a few storefronts that are still vacant, and some strip centers and things like this. We do need to bring business in, and we need to be sure we keep the businesses that we have here. I think going around and speaking to folks, there's some concern over the way that some of the requirements and such are set up to have people come in. This is something we can look at potentially to make it easier without sacrificing aesthetics that are important here, and working with groups like the Chamber helps with a lot of that, too. I think that, as was pointed out, as Councilman Henderson pointed out, there are a lot of programs and such that are available for us here in Dickinson. I think what is important, where a place the city could improve, I'll give a short story just to stay within the time limit, it won't be long. In our subdivision where we live in Bentwood, our HOA was responsible for a culvert, and we were told by the city that there was a grant program that this could be used for this culvert through the state. And so, when we inquired further with city officials to find out how we could get it addressed, we asked if they could help to, you know, with the grant application, and the city's response was that they didn't want to set a precedent. I understand the city has limited resources and that it could put some burden on people to do that, but I do think we can look at ways that the city can help to facilitate programs like that, whether it's a temp full-time grant rider or other places to assist or bring in volunteers that are free. So, I think we can do some things like that to connect them with resources outside of what the city can do.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it. H. Scott, same question to you, the priority, number-one priority if elected to deal with Harvey issues.
Okay. So, I think that the key thing in all of these conversations is to understand that drainage, or whatever it is, post-Harvey drainage, doesn't operate in a vacuum. We need to identify and plan for a strategic macro approach, right? So, we need to understand that we are going to have to find a way to attract new businesses to the Dickinson community. We need to preserve the Dickinson identity, but we still need to grow our tax base. We're squeezed in between, we're squeezed in between League City and Texas City, and we lose a lot of our commercial base to those two cities. If we're going to compete, we're going to have to invite new businesses. As far as post-Harvey, Harvey was, I mean, devastating is an understatement for what it did to this city. Ninety percent of the city was flooded, 50% of the city was wiped out. So, Harvey is this big flashing light that says that we need to address our drainage situation. But what we need to notice is that our drainage was stressed before Harvey. I watched as rainfall with, the flood line on my property would crawl up further and further, even before Harvey. So, we need to have a long-term strategic post. We need to be a good neighbor. We need to coordinate with League City, with Texas City, with Santa Fe, with the county. We need to form partnerships so that we can get this addressed. We shouldn't have a drainage system that negatively affects our neighbors. We have to be good community neighbors. So, really, post-Harvey is the flashing red light, but we need to understand that these problems predated Harvey. Thank you.
Thank you, H. Scott. Staying on that subject matter, Bruce, I'm gonna go with you this first, Councilman. Is particularly this, and I don't wanna be a negative term on here, but the hodgepodge drainage system that exists in the city, ditches in one part of town, culverts in another part of town, HOA-controlled drainage, because an HOA may have built a subdivision along the way, that there is, there is not a centralized, for the lack of a better term, system that was ever in place because of the growth of the city in different ways over that. What needs to be done, let's keep it on the top priority, what needs to be done to get that system more effectively working so that we don't have the situations that H. Scott pointed out, where on a heavy rain day, everyone is just gripping onto their handles of their cars, getting ready to leave the house?
Thank you very much, TJ. Drainage throughout the city, we've started a desilting program, where desilting is the term we use as far as actually cleaning out the ditches. Something we've kinda uncovered as a result of that is a little bit of a Pandora's Box, and that is, all the different houses that were built in this city are built by different builders. Very few of them were actually a developer in one location. As a result of that, everybody built a house, they put a culvert in front of their driveway, and there was no point that anybody in history of Dickinson said, okay, we need to make sure all these culverts are on the same elevation. So, as we've gone through and we've cleared a bunch of ditches, we've discovered that a lot of people have moats in front of their houses, and it's a result of the culverts being at different elevations. While that in itself sounds like a simple situation, it's actually also part of the problem, and that when you have culverts that are at different elevation, nature has a way of flattening itself. So, by the time it gets to the point that it flows out of one culvert into the next one, now you've filled up the first culvert halfway. And this is gonna happen every time, and it'll happen in probably less than a year, where it will reach the point that it settles itself out. So, everything we've done is continuing to fill itself in, and we would be in a constant state of behind on our maintenance as a result of that. So, the city administrator and council have all agreed that we're working on a program where we're replacing culverts. This is gonna do two things. One, it's gonna increase conveyance out of everybody's neighborhoods to be able to drain these streets down into the outflows into the bayou. Two, it will slow the requirement for us to have to have maintenance annually in every subdivision in the city. This will help us keep up and get ahead. Everything that we're working on in the history of Dickinson, never questioning everybody's heart and their intent, but a lot of the programs have been basically just moving the bubble to a different area. When you get to one location, you're making progress, but while you're working on that, behind you, what you worked on five years ago is now falling apart, because we can't keep up with the maintenance, because the programs are too slow, and we gotta look at different areas on how to basically stay ahead of the bubble to where we're just looking at maintenance in a manageable condition. And there'll be more to be said later. Thank you.
Sean, you brought up the subject as well, one of the issues there. What, you know, that hodgepodge, whatever, if elected to council, what are gonna be your priorities? You've heard the councilman say what he's, and he and others are working on right now. What would be your priorities?
Well, I think one thing to do is to work on the coordination between those entities, because as TJ pointed out, if you have HOAs and you have various people that are doing this, we could sort of do a good job of having them all in and coordinate together in some way. I also think that, like, I've seen the culvert issue that Councilman Henderson's talking about, but also I think the planning process could be improved in what we're doing. And I, and everybody's, I think there's a real pressure to try to fix things after Harvey, and the public wants to see results, and I think everybody gets that. But I have talked to numerous residents that have said that there's issues with the work that has been done outside of their house, and they've had some issues responding, or getting a response when they've worked with the city to get it sort of addressed. And so, I think we need to work on that part of it, too, coordinating also with the citizens, not just with the different entities, as we go about, and make sure that the work we're doing is well thought out and has good quality control as we go.
Gotcha. Let's stay within the same race. Kevin, let me go ahead and give you a chance to address that, the drainage system that's in the system.
As a developer, I've actually built in many cities, and culvert sizing and drainage is usually a process that's brought out during the planning and submission portion. Somebody actually tells you what size culvert that you need in that area. It shouldn't be left up to a builder or somebody just wanting to build their property. Every single lot situation in the city is different. We're all fashion different in the city. We have large lots, we have smaller lots, and the drainage requirements for each one of those should be different. Active involvement in the true planning of a development is key to making sure the drainage operates the way it's supposed to operate when you turn it back over to the city, because at the end of the day, it becomes your responsibility, the citizens, to own that stuff and to take care of it and maintain it, and for it to not be a large tax liability to you. You have some reasonable expectations that some work be done upfront.
Thank you. H. Scott, dealing with that, with the drainage issue, particularly as a citizen, since it's a mixed bag across the, across the community.
Sure. So, the, part of the answer lies in the question, right? We need to find consistency in our draining situation, but at the same time, we need to understand what Mr. Edmond said, and that is that each neighborhood is going to have a different requirement as far as what that, that looks like. We need to coordinate that and plan that in a way that it works in the watershed to get the water draining to the correct tributaries and then out to the bayou. So, one of the things also is, in my neighborhood, I live in Nickelstone, there are streets where you can go down in Nickelstone where the culverts are, you know, 10, 10 feet, five feet, different from each other, different depths, right? And so, you may not think about it, but as the water comes down that path, it's gotta take lefts, it's gotta take rights, it goes around rocks, it creates backflows, and there's no way, there's not gonna be the resources to go in there and just redo all the culverts, redo all the system, but we've gotta have a strategic plan and get engineers involved in order to mitigate those challenges in our drainage structure. Me, I've lived in my home for 10 years, my wife has lived there since she was a child, and in those 10 years, I have not yet seen any maintenance done on my section of the street. Now, I know I have seen them in other places. Don't let my sleek physique fool you. I'm not very, you know, mobile out there digging up stuff in my ditches, but I've had to clear out my culvert multiple times with a shovel, not knowing necessarily how I need to do it, and trying to get the ditch to be more than just a moat outside my house. So, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an expert on draining, but what I can do is I can sit down with people who are, I can receive information from them, and I can use that to make good decisions, to create a long-term vision, to improve it long-term, because that's what we're gonna have to do.
Thank you, H. Scott. Councilman King.
Dickinson is currently engaged in that process. Prior to Hurricane Harvey, do not assume that Dickinson is not engaged in the street drainage repair process. Council, mayor, city administrator, we've been engaged in that process and force clearing our ditches. It's a partnership of the city and the citizens to make sure our grass clippings does not end up in our drainage system, make sure we clear the trash and debris from our ditches, to maintain those particular areas. So, it's a partnership of collaboration and communication and coordination. So, as a result of moving forward with the drainage process, clearing ditches is a process. It is not a sprint, it's a marathon. And just last night, we had a major storm come through our area. Most of us had anxiety based upon meteorologist predictions of what possibly could happen with the rainfall. 51 inches of rain is an awful lot of rain to fall at one particular time. I don't care if you're Houston or San Antonio, that's a lot of water to deal with at one time. Water flows through the path of least resistance. As a result of our efforts, we've learned from our experience through Harvey, we've had engineers in, we're following the produced plan and process, even in the Nickelstone area, in the Moore's Edition area, in the Gully Ranch Court area, West Side, East Side, we're following the plan on project of moving water to the pathway we can move it so it does not flood the most valuable commodity most of our residents have, which is their home, prized possession. So, we are moving forward with the city, through Public Works, through the engineering department, with our city administrator, as well as with the citizens, to make sure we do due diligence so that we don't have remotely close to another Harvey with five inches of rain. Thank you.
Let me ask you this, and Councilman, I'm gonna come right back at you with this one. We hear what's being done now. You've been on council how long now?
Been on council now 16 years.
Was this being addressed?
Absolutely.
In this fashion, though, beforehand?
Absolutely. If you heard my comment, the Public Works was working with clearing ditches, pulling out the silt from the ditches, the culverts. That was a process that Public Works was engaged in. We also have an engineering firm that came in to Dickinson. So, yes, we focused on citizens. We did not, nor did any other city, expect 51 inches of rainfall in the city of Dickinson, where 85% of our city was underwater. No one was expecting that.
Well, and while not expected, part of leadership, Sean, let me give you this, is when you're elected to council, is to at least set policies that do expect the worst at some point. When you hear that this was being worked on, we've heard from others and in the community that it really wasn't. You're a newer resident, I should say, of Dickinson, on the, on the west side, but let me have your take on that.
Well, so, my take would be, I have no doubt that there were plans to address this and that something was being executed, but that plan doesn't seem to have been particularly effective based on my personal observation or, and also the feedback from a lot of residents who frankly had a harder drainage situation than we do. I would say, and I think in fairness to everybody who's here into the city, not to just rag on the city, but, you know, there's these Harvey-style events, there are things we could have done better, absolutely, but, you know, the fundamental realities of it probably still would have been the same, right? That on the margin, some people might not have been flooded that were, but, so I don't also wanna be, you know, I'd kinda just dump on the city here, too, but I do have to say that, while I think the plans were out there, that, yeah, the execution didn't seem to be materializing in a way that people were seeing it was making them feel comfortable and that has the kind of results that we want, so.
Gotcha. H. Scott, you, it kinda is the same follow-up, because obviously not being an incumbent, you're not gonna have some of the basics in there, but as you heard the councilman talk about what has been done, he says it was being done before Harvey, you made a point, and you don't seem to see it that way, and I wanna give you a chance to respond.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna echo something that Sean said here, and that is that it isn't a matter of thinking whether or not people have had a good plan in place, or whether they had the best intentions or anything like that. The results speak for themselves, and so I'm not going to come up here and play backseat driver. That's why I'm running. I'm running because I have not been happy with the results that I've seen over the 10 years that I've lived in Dickinson. I feel that there needs to be a more focused prioritization on the drainage and roads, which are primary functions of a city government. And so, you know, to, definitely, I look at everything currently through a prism of Harvey, right? And I think that our city, you know, Chief Morales filled in wonderfully, I think our city did a great job under the circumstances. There's, like Sean said, there's nothing that really could have prevented a Harvey from happening, but, but don't let me answer that question for you. You answer that question. In the last 10 years, in the last 16 years, have you seen marked improvement in our roads and our drainage? You know, so that's the question that I was asked, and that's the reason that I'm running. And so, I don't think that I have seen that, and, you know, it's not, it's not to pick on council, but I think it's time to look for some new ideas.
I think our biggest challenge is resourcing our plans. Our Public Works Department is well undermanned, and I remember when I was, when I was building here back in the early 2000s, there was an opportunity for you to call the city, to come out and desilt the front of the property, because during construction, things happened, and they'd come out and do that. Today, that opportunity is gone, and you need that. You need, you need a fresh start when you're, when you're doing development work. But truthfully, our Public Works Department is undermanned and under-resourced to be able to, to be able to tackle this and maintain our drainage issues as they are. And the desilting projects that we have been currently doing, you can, you can walk through the areas that have been done, and the, and the areas that have been cut are all different elevations. So, as it was brought up before, you have moats in front of people's property, and that doesn't make the homeowner in front of that moat satisfied with the, with the effort that's been done. And I think if you're gonna start a job, you wanna see the job complete all the way through and be willing, be willing to make the adjustment. If there's an elevation change that needs to occur in a culvert, the city has a responsibility to make sure that that happens so that the drainage works as it's intended.
Councilman Henderson, you're on.
Thank you very much. I think the original question goes back to.
Bring the mic a little closer, chief.
Okay, thank you. I think the original question started with a discussion about emergency management and our response to Harvey. We have an emergency management team in the city. It's part of the volunteer fire department.
Actually, it was about drainage efforts before Harvey, is what the original question was.
I say, the answers went all over. I was trying to contract where we were going with it. Okay, drainage efforts before Harvey, then. For the last six years, the core concern that has been, number one, from 2013, when I ran the question, was streets, streets, streets. Okay? Streets and drainage, our infrastructure has never ceased to be the core focus of what this council has worked on. I can speak for the last six years myself. Now, everything that we've come up to with, I have to tell people, there's 97 miles of streets in this city. So, with 97 miles of streets, you can double that number, and you're gonna come up with about 194 miles of ditches and drainage. That's not a small feat. In my time of walking around campaigning, talking with everybody, what I've discovered is a lot of people don't realize what we're doing, because we've actually approached a lot of streets, a lot of drainage, we've made a lot of progress in the last six years. What a lot of people don't realize, though, is because it's not in their neighborhood, say, or near their house, what we haven't done a really good job at is communicating. We do a lot of projects, we spend a lot of money making progress, we buy equipment, we hire people, we're making movements in the right direction, but we haven't communicated it real well. And I'm very motivated to get a program put together where we have an email report system that everybody can get a report once a month to find out what we're actually doing. As these projects continue on, and there's gonna be an amazing amount of work done in the next 12 months, 18 months, three years, with funds that are coming in, again, back what I said, from the GLO, HUD, FEMA, there's gonna be a lot of progress. The progress has never ended. The problem is, I think with everybody, I think 30 years ago, they were probably talking about streets problems, and if we're not careful in 30 years, we're gonna continue talking about it, unless we can continue to make progress, I believe somebody said it earlier, talking about developing our, our revenue base, and you can only add so much of it relative to ad valorem taxes from people's property taxes. Where we're gonna survive and move ahead is by continuing to develop our city. to survive and move ahead is by continuing to develop our city, continue to bring in more businesses that can improve our sales tax base. These are where the money is going to come in that allows us to continue to develop more programs, more projects, because as I said before, right now, in the last thirty years of Dickinson, the bubble has just moved to the left and to the right. We've got to get to a point that we're ahead of it, and maintenance is what we work on more so than complete restoration. Thank you, TJ.
Got you, Bruce. Somewhat of a follow-up to that. It's a big chore. I think we've heard it, oh.
I didn't even-
To follow up, I started with you. Yeah, I know. You're going to get a chance, councilman. Don't worry. This is going to be a deal. As I said, it's an interview style. I control it, so we'll get to you. I'll get to you. I'm trying to give everyone a chance to get their shot in and come in there. And you can, anytime when your time comes up, you can address any issue you want. I may have to bring you back, but it's a big task. And councilman, I'll come to you third on this one. So I'm going to start at the end and come back this way. Kevin, it's a big task. You pointed out, okay, we should, you know, have the same rules in, and they need to be in place. The problem is, that wasn't done in the past. So right now, you have a big chore, the elevations that Councilman Henderson brought it out, being all different. Getting that all caught up may be outside the scope of the budget in the city of Dickinson right now, to get it caught up, unless you want to play it out over the next so many years, paying piecemeal and the like. Up to the north, yeah, fifty-five years, yeah. Up to the north, right now, there's a vote going on, two bond issues, and a sales tax increase. Obviously, the sales tax increase is off the table for Dickinson, but would you be supportive of an infrastructure bond issue for Dickinson that would be roads and drainage flood issues? And if so, or if not, why not? And if so, what form should it take?
I am absolutely in favor of a bond issue. I think giving, doing a bond issue, or taking up a bond issue, would give opportunities for the citizens to react on their voice. The things that they are most upset about, it allows them to go in and make a decision if it's really that important to them or not. So I believe, I believe a bond issue would, I mean, an opportunity for a bond to be done would be most relevant to do.
Councilman Henderson?
Thank you very much. As far as a bond issue, that's one of the things I think on council, we're probably all relatively proud of, is the fact that we've improved our bond rating to double A over the last six years. That's a very effective thing. We have discussed it many times on council, the concept of a bond issue. And I'll tell you, from a personal point, also as a citizen, I'm not opposed to it, as long as the return on investment's proper. What is interesting with Dickinson, the size of Dickinson, we're not League City. We do not have the budget League City has, we do not have the bond capability that League City has. Our annual budget is about between fourteen million and twenty million, depending on how many different revenue sources you put into it. So the question at the end of the day is, would I support a bond? The question comes down to, how much would the bond be? What would it be effect on people's homes and their taxes? And ultimately, what would we achieve with that bond? That's the most important question of the day. If we pass a ten million dollar bond, and it increases everybody's taxes, and basically, we're in the same boat here, where we've done some improvements in one area of the city, now we've got seventy-five percent of the city that feels like they're paying taxes for something that they're getting no return on. At the end of the day, it goes back to what I was saying, communication. I think this would definitely be something to let the citizens, well, obviously, they would have to vote it in, of course, but we must improve our communication to let people know what we're doing, how we're doing it, how we're spending their money, how we're spending it appropriately. I take responsibility for my actions on a daily basis, but what gets aggravating is when I know for a fact I've worked very hard trying to achieve something, and when I talk to ninety percent of the people that I've knocked on doors with, and they don't think we've done anything. And the frustration is just the fact that we haven't communicated what's going on with everybody. And I'm back to, I know this is about the bond issue, but I'm absolutely dedicated to improving our communication with everybody in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. And as I said, Councilman King, I'll have you a chance. You can address the other issue you wanted to, too, if you keep that shorter, but first off, address the bond. I know you're a preacher, so that's why I have to keep you in check a little bit here, you know, so.
Thank you so much, TJ.
That's why Councilman Henderson says he's going to say ditto after you every second time. Anyway, so let me get back to the subject. Let me have you address a possible bond issue first, and then you can go ahead and follow up on what you wanted to from earlier.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Once again, as Councilman Henderson just articulated so eloquently, we did, as a council, improve our bond rating. Again, it's important to understand this is a process. One of the points of the seven habits of highly effective people is thinking things through. And so being able to think it through, one of the things of Rotary is, is it beneficial to all concerned, and will it build goodwill and better friendships? Because if you raise a bond, if you have a bond, you raise a bond, citizens pass it, how is it going to affect you as a homeowner, as far as your taxes are concerned? And so it's important to be able to make sure we think this process through, have no problem with a bond. I do know what League City is doing. I just met with Mayor Pat Hollis just about an hour ago. I do realize what they're trying to accomplish. They have a greater, for his tax base is concerned, they have a greater footprint as far as the city is concerned. And if we can have a bond, we want to make sure we think it through to have all we need accomplished with that bond, at least to the better degree so that it makes a difference. If it doesn't make a difference in what we're already currently doing with the pay-as-you-go type process, then you have to really wonder, is it beneficial? And will it help the citizens, or will it hinder the citizens in the process? So yes, I am in favor of a bond. I have no problem with that. Just want to make sure we think it through, so that we get out of it what it is needed for the citizens of Dickinson, so that they'll be able to feel comfortable. Let me take a few minutes, seconds of my time, and go back. Bayou Chantilly was a project we did prior to Hurricane Harvey. We worked in Bayou Chantilly, we worked in Nickelstone area prior to that, worked in Moore's addition. So the city of Dickinson has engaged in street drainage projects. Whenever we build a new street, we focus on drainage. We coordinate and collaborate with the water district to make sure we're not working on a street that the water district, it will come behind us and tear up, because they have to do some work for their particular district. So there is coordination, communication, and collaboration with the Galveston County to make sure we're all working together as a team. We all are impacting the people who pay the same taxes to keep these government entities operating and providing services. So it is paramount and imperative that we maintain a dialogue with these particular government entities. So yes, we have worked in the past. Trust me, sixteen years ago, when I came on council, the streets were in a condition that needed tremendous attention. One of the things I ran on was streets and drainage. We have focused on that. That's why we have before you the quarters and sales tax. I hope and pray that that particular item is passed, because it brings about two million dollars a year to the city based on the quarter cent sales tax. So that was a plan that we had in place so that we could address things prior to Hurricane Harvey. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, councilman. Sean, getting to you on the bond, a possible bond, because grants are coming in, we're seeing more of that real funding, but those aren't going to pay for everything, and maybe in the process of not getting it done fast enough for many residents.
Right. So let me say a few things. There's been several things said. So there's, I think the answer is yes, we need to look at a bond, but give me, bear with me while I go through my reasoning here. As TJ just said, we are digging out of a hole with a teaspoon, right, that we're never going to catch up on. We have decades of issues where, you know, we haven't had the kind of maintenance funding that we need. We don't have, we're understaffed, we're underfunded. It's a resource issue, so we have to deal with it. In order to, I think what Councilman King and Councilman Henderson said about the bond needing to be a good one, yeah. I mean, we can't advance a bond plan that's poor, that to me, that's a given. When I speak to residents, many of whom have volunteered to me without prompting their potential support for a bond, there are major problems that they bring up, sometimes our taxes, obviously, but for many, they'll say that they are concerned that the plan would not be executed properly. That tends to be the major one, actually. I know I said two, but I really meant one. And I think part of this is, if we go back a moment ago to the way that some of the recent drainage work has been done, for some, they've expressed that this hasn't inspired confidence in them. And so the idea of a bond, they think, I'm okay with it, but I don't know that it would be administered well, so they want to see that. I think that this comes back to something that was said about people not being aware of the efforts the city council is taking. I think they're, I think they know very well whether something's being done or not, or they are. It isn't a matter of communication. What they're trying to tell the city is that what we're doing isn't meeting the mark, and that we need to do something else. And I think that's how you get at a bond, because I know later, and we've talked about it some, we're going to talk about the need to expand the tax base, because we don't have refineries like Texas City, or urban sprawl like League City. So we've got to attract in business, but we have to show that business something that we have skin in the game. So if we get some kind of a bond, a small bond, maybe we can find some grant or something, but maybe not. And if we can use this to really get some good press and say, hey, look at what we're doing, this is going to help bring in business, and this is going to give us a jolt that will help to expand that tax base and lower taxes over time. So I think that all, it all kind of interconnects with a lot of issues, but absolutely, we need to talk about, one, and getting it planned out effectively, so.
Gotcha. H. Scott?
So anytime I'm faced with the proposition of voting for a bond, I ask myself a couple questions, right? Probably the same questions that all of you ask. What's the plan for that money? And do we have the confidence that the people put in charge of that money are going to be good stewards of that money? And what is that money going to be used for? So I think one thing that is very, very critically important that we do when we talk about bond money, or general revenue budgeting, or whatever, is we need to separate the idea between maintenance, repair, and reconstruction or construction of new roads. I in no way support a bond that is to pay for ongoing maintenance, right? If we're going to do a bond, it needs to be a capital project where that item, that asset for the city, is going to last the length of the time that it takes to pay it off, right? So the same thing, do we have any Dave Ramsey fans in here? I'm a huge Dave Ramsey fan. I know that my roof is going to need to be replaced, right? So I understand it's going to be maybe fifteen years in the hot Texas sun, so I put aside money every year to pay for the replacement of my roof. What I don't do is I don't finance my weed eater, right? I don't put my weed eater on my Lowe's credit card, because that's an ongoing maintenance expense. And so unfortunately, now, let's don't blame this council or that council, let's blame the last thirty years' worth of councils. They have failed. They have failed to maintain the drains in the streets. I've seen some good improvement. It's not to say that there's not good effort being made, but overall, they have let us down. And we are going to need a bond at some point. Right now, I could not answer yes to the questions that I proposed, so right now, I would not vote for a bond. But I'm hoping to provide the type of leadership, the type of focus on our budget to separate out maintenance, repair, and new construction, in a way to give the citizens confidence that they can trust us with a, you know, million, multimillion-dollar bond proposal.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and switch gears, and H. Scott, I'm going to come to you first, and then we'll go on back down this way here. Switch gears a little bit, economic development, everyone's touched on that somewhat along the way. That seems to be the magic bullet term a lot of times. What form of economic development in your mind? Let's keep this kind of a short answer, because I'm going to explore this a little bit more. What do you consider to be economic development priority for Dickinson right now? H. Scott, I'm going to go with you, then we're just going to go on down the line here.
Okay, so it's two things. Number one is, we've got to create an environment that business owners want to invest in Dickinson. So we've got a lot of empty storefronts. A lot of that can be attributed to Harvey, Harvey, but at the same time, we need to create, we need to show businesses that we have a plan to address our infrastructure needs, because how are people going to get to their business, you know, if we don't have quality roads and quality, you know, infrastructure in place? So that's number one. Number two is, we need to find a way to claw back some of the commercial base that we have lost to League City, right? I would love to spend all of my spending money on local businesses, right? But unfortunately, there's a lot of times, you know, when I have to go to League City in order to try a new restaurant, or to do something entertainment, watch a movie, you know, we've got to try to find things that can keep our citizens spending their money here in Dickinson, and also invite people from our surrounding communities to invest their money here, spend it at our businesses and not League Cities.
I'm going to be coming back to that, and candidates think of this as when I come back, on that subject of finding, I'm going to ask you for one solution that would address that issue. Sean, just talking about your vision of what economic development should look like in Dickinson.
Well, I think I laid part of that out a moment ago, that, you know, we have to show businesses that we have some skin in the game as a city, and a bond could be a way to do that, because as Scott said, yeah, we have to have infrastructure, we have to have things like this. We can't just say to business, hey, come here and expand our tax base so we can fix our streets, and we'll put that risk on you. There's this, if you build it, they will come thing, but, you know, that works if it's a voice telling you to build a baseball field, right? You've got to have something there to want people to come out. So we have to do things that show business, hey, they're fixing infrastructure, residents want to stay there, residents want to move there, there's going to be a consumer base. I'd go back to the chamber, or we work in effectively with the chamber to keep the businesses that we have here, to keep them happy, to help them develop. I think you end up having a discussion here about the EDC as well. I think maybe we're moving in a better direction now, but we've had some management issues with that, to where we had a very high degree of turnover last year, which concerned some people. But the long-term thing has to be to get these, all these engines working, so that we can show, as Councilman Deed said the other night, you know, we can, on a piece of paper, with a pitch to businesses to say, hey, here is what we're doing, here's our plan, here's how it all works together. We have defined short-term goals, we're meeting them, and you're going to be a part of that, and it's going to be beneficial for you and for the city. We have to be able to do that.
All right. Councilman King?
First, let me say, I think that the mayors and city councilmen that have served in the city of Dickinson over the last thirty years, working with what they had to work with, Mayor Holly, Mayor Mitchener, Mayor Masters-
Let's get on to the economic development questions.
...had done a wonderful job with what they had. I don't think they failed Dickinson. I think they fought for Dickinson. Secondly, to your question, we are sitting in the business that was flooded by Hurricane Harvey, that came back, that restored their facility, that rebuilt their barbecue restaurant, that built this facility, restored it, because they believe in Dickinson, because of incentives, because of the population. Businesses looking for customers, the consumer base, do you have the resident population that can support and sustain my business? Right now, businesses are looking at various cities based upon what is being offered to them. And so I think Dickinson, working with the chamber, economic development, can attract businesses based upon our population. We have a great city. We have a great school district. We have a great community. And I believe that type of community, that type of district, can attract businesses in Dickinson. I'm grateful for the businesses that came back, and for the citizens that they received. I believe we can attract more businesses, and I believe we are going to, just as League City growth has come south, that growth is coming to Dickinson. That growth will be in Dickinson. We are seeing growth on 517 on the west side. So we're seeing growth after Harvey, and we will continue to see growth in the city of Dickinson.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. Question is about EDC. Sorry, I always like to retweet the question so I remember what I'm talking about, I guess.
About economic development vision, not necessarily EDC.
Economic development vision. One of the biggest things I've been talking about for a while now is a question of the brand of Dickinson. And those are important words. It sounds pretty simple, but as we're sitting here, and everybody in this room that has been in this area for any length of time, when I say League City, there's probably just a few words that pass through most of your minds. When I say Santa Fe, when I say Hitchcock, when I say Texas City, when I say Friendswood, there's words that are very common that go through everybody's mind. Now the question comes to, what do you think of when I say the word Dickinson? If you ask people in other cities, what do they think of when they say the word Dickinson? The key to me, we have a lot of things that we can do, but the key is to improve our brand, to make sure that people recognize that this is a good city, this is not a League City, this is not a Texas City, this is not an Alvin, this is Dickinson. This is a beautiful little town that has one main street going through the middle of it, and has beautiful overgrowth, plant, excuse me, vegetation. We have the Dickinson Bayou, that I take great pleasure in going down on my boat regularly, and I'm amazed at the number of people that I've talked to that I ask, when's the last time you went down Dickinson Bayou? And the answer is, many of them, never, not in ten years, not in fifteen years. The bayou is one of the best resources we have in this city, and it's a hidden resource. So doing a lot of different activities, there is no one, but ultimately, the key is for us to maintain the concept of improving the brand of Dickinson, all the way to, let's talk about FM 517 and I-45 intersection. I've been calling that our front porch for years before I got on council. If you look at our front porch right now, it's absolutely hideous. We have overgrowth, we have trash, we have debris. It's kind of like if any of you went home, and you took your muddy boots and your trash bags, and you threw them on your front porch, and then wheeled a refrigerator out on top of it. What does that say for your home? What does that say for your home? It's a negative response to your home. That is the presentation of our city. That's the first impression people get of our town. So we need to improve that. We need to start driving down 517 and looking at all of the properties that are alongside of it, making sure that we are doing our front yard first. I'm not diminishing anything of the value of everybody's subdivisions or anybody's neighborhoods. I don't, I'm not reducing the value of that for a second, but if we're going to talk about improving our economic condition, if we're going to talk about improving our infrastructure, all of that is based on improving our revenue stream. And that a lot of that has to do with people have to recognize Dickinson is where they want to be, not someplace they have to be, but where they want to be. And so this is where we work to improve our brand, work to improve our city. I give major props to Dickinson Beautiful on a regular basis. I appreciate what they do, but at the same time, not diminishing what they do, but everybody in this room and all 20,000 citizens in this town need to take ownership. Council has taken ownership. We're doing the best we can with the resources we have, as Councilman King said. The councils prior to us did the best they could with what we have, but I still look at every single person in this room and everybody that lives in the city. It's our job as citizens first to make sure that we're promoting Dickinson also, making sure we're taking care of our neighborhoods. If you're driving down the road, don't let something blow out of the bed of your truck. Don't throw something out the window. We must take care of our town and make it beautiful so that we can continue to show people, this is the Mayberry that you haven't seen. And I am very proud to make sure that we continue working toward that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Kevin?
I'm probably the most least educated on this subject, but the firm, from the people that I've spoken with, I, I think the EDC can make all the calls they want, the chamber can make all the calls they want. It eventually has to get up to the city and it has to be a friendly environment there in order for it to progress further in the development. Because if it doesn't work out up there, it just doesn't happen here at all. As soon as you walk in the door, if you feel like you're in a headlock, you don't feel welcome there, you're not coming back. You're going to go walk right down the street. Our overlay district, our overlay is, I believe, a little encumbersome for small business to be promoted through here. Even, even with small matches to, to, to those expenses to, to meet up to the standards of, of the overlay requirements. At the end of the day, I got to justify, is it worth for me to spend this extra money? I'll still be probably short because the overlay, the overlay requirements are very stringent. And can I go walk right down the street and get in there a whole lot cheaper and still capture some of your tax base?
Gotcha. All right. And gentlemen, I'm going to ask as we're getting closer to the top of the hour here, we're going to speed up your answers a little bit and get a little more on point. I'm going to come back down this way. Basically, because my next question was going to be a kind of a, of a follow-through on yours anyway, Kevin. It is, what is the one thing right now, only one thing, one thing, that you think the city needs to do to improve business environment, particularly for local businesses already here in town?
Relax. I mean, really, just, just relax and, and don't be so stringent on the requirements to, to come and do business here. Anybody can do business anywhere and it just needs to feel welcoming at the end of the day. I gotta, I gotta want to spend my money here in order to do business here, to help you, to help me. I, I gotta want to do it and if I don't want to do it, I'll find a place that I want to do it that appears to want me.
Gotcha. Councilman Henderson.
If I can get a clarification, businesses in town currently?
Yes.
Okay.
Or, well, I mean, the locally owned businesses, not the franchises, you know, the, the big box stuff. A lot of folks go with that route, but, but mainly on those, the existing businesses is, is that, is that focus?
Well, specifically since Harvey, and I think probably most everybody in this room's had the same adventure, when it came to rebuilding, permitting was an issue. It was a big issue and we had a lot of people had challenges. There's no question about being able to improve our communication with the, the permitting department, our code enforcement, and help them along to make sure that what they're actually requiring is just in line with what the expectations are. And if the question begs to differ to where it says, okay, maybe the state codes or whatever codes are not up to where they should be, then we should be having a conversation about creating a, a resolution, creating an ordinance, whatever, that makes it crystal clear to people what they're expected to do. We've had a lot of problems with people in our city, whether you're coming into town or whether you're already in town pertaining to what are our actual requirements. We've got 30 years of ordinances. We, I give credit to the city administrator, has been working on calling many of those that will help us improve our communication with these businesses so that when they show up, they're not sitting here going, well, I just spent a million dollars on property and now I can't get an S U P to open my business. We need to make it clearer and simpler for these people to be able to identify, this is what it takes to work in Dickinson. That way, when they show up, they know what to do and they don't have to jump through 87 hoops to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Sean?
I, I would, oh.
No, no, I'm doing, I'm keeping y'all within, every once in a while I'll go with y'all though in the same race and then, yeah, we mix it up a little bit.
I didn't want to jump you on the line there.
Oh, trust me, he would have made note of it already.
Sure. Okay, okay. Again, I would go back to, I would say again, infrastructure that what's going to help businesses to have, our current business and to bring in business is if we have some infrastructure in place, again, that has, we've retained residents, we're attracting residents, that's your, your demand. It also will help to bring people in on the weekends, travelers, whatever, people from other communities to come in and spend that money. The city looking good, beautification aesthetics is all important, but you know, literally the rubber meets the road somewhere and we have to have that, we have to have good, good drainage and that, that, that helps to really rehabilitate the reputation of the community after Harvey, which I think has undeservedly been kind of taken down a few pegs in the, in the area.
Gotcha. H Scott?
One thing.
One thing.
The number one thing that we can do to support our local businesses is get out of their way, right? Let's, let's let business expand. There's, there's companies here in town that want to grow, that growth, but we have so many regulations and so many overlays requirements that they're, they're crippled from being able to grow their business and expand their business. I, for one, and I'm sure that many people in the city share with me the frustration of driving down 517 and still waiting and hoping for that glorious day that Ziegler's reopens, right? So let's, let's find a way, you want to support a local business, let's find a way to get Ziegler's grocery store open, right? Let's ask Ziegler's grocery store what's hurting them from opening. And then as a city council, let's do that. That's my answer.
Gotcha. Councilman King?
Encouragement, to encourage our citizens to shop Dickinson. Everything you need as a resident in city of Dickinson is in Dickinson. We have what you need. Encourage our citizens to shop Dickinson, whether it's destination Dickinson, whether it's shop Dickinson, the brand that we have is that we are a family, we are a city. And that unity of oneness encouragement gives others the vision that this is worth coming to. The, the difference is worth the drive. And so citizens will be able to engage the process of experiencing a family environment, a friendly environment coming into our local businesses, just what Keith Lilly did here, is build on relationship. And that relationship cannot be deterred or denied. You're coming here because you like it here, it's comfortable here. You like it over at Key Worth. You enjoy, yes, Ziegler's, you enjoy the places where there be McDonald's. I was so glad when McDonald's opened during the Hurricane Harvey experience because it's a place where we know the people, we know the owner, we know the workers. And by building relationships and encouraging Dickinson, we will not only grow the businesses, we will attract new businesses.
Gotcha. And Councilman King, I'm going to come right back to you here because I want to stay in y'all, in your position right here. For the lack of the better term, public market 2.0, as it's been kind of a relaunch of that. Where do you, and make, let's make this quick. Where do you stand on that project and how much city involvement should be as that moves forward or if there should be?
It's clear where I stand. I support the public market. I'm on the board of H G H C, voted about two months ago for the $3 million toward that particular project. So I'm in support of that. I appreciate the citizen involvement in that project. We are supporting as council based upon the vision that's come forth for the public market. So council is in supportive, I'm in support of it as well. Moving forward, our city government, ultimately the buck will stop here with the city council. And so we would definitely want to make sure we are involved, we are involved and we will see that become a reality and it will bless the city of Dickinson.
Gotcha. H Scott?
So in, in a city that, I mean, so far, over and over and over again, we need, we hear that we need to grow our economic base. So in a city desperate for economic development, I'm in favor of the public market, but here's what's very important, and I don't know who attended the, the public meeting last month and something that was said, this entire question comes down to sizing this project correctly, scoping this project correctly. Because if we get it too big, then, then it's going to fail, it's going to fail in our downtown, you know, right by the bayou and it's not going to do us any good. If it's too small, we, we know that the problem's with that. But what, what I'm hoping for is that the, the public market can be a seed planted in our beautiful downtown area that will attract other businesses, other restaurants, other places selling goods and services to come into that area and, and be the beginning of a growth of our economic base.
Thank you. Sean? You're on.
I think I got it. Okay. So we're, I'm going to, I'm going to echo Bruce here. So repeat the question one more time.
Gotcha. The public market, where do you stand on that and what form should it take?
It's good, it's good to be clear on what you're talking about. So I, I, similar to Scott, I am in, in, in favor of it, but I do have some reservations. One is the scale. My understanding is that it has been scaled down a little bit from where it was previously, which I think is good. Hearing citizens talk, I've heard some concern about location and parking. I, I do have some questions about that. I, I know that the city owns some property off of, of I-45 and I've seen some, I've heard some residents say that they think that might be a location for it. There may be reasons that that can't be, but, but those are things I'd want to explore. So the key is, is just making sure that we have the, the project, as he said, scaled properly, but also that we're going to be able to bring in people off the freeway, particularly 45 to get them over here. However we do that, advertising, whatever, again, we have to work with our local businesses, groups like this one, again, the chamber, to really come in and, and try to steer people over in that direction. So I, I think we need it because we need economic development, but yeah, we do have to make sure that the, the details are, are right.
Thank you, Sean. Kevin? Public market, where do you stand on it?
I'm in favor of the public market. I think it offers an opportunity for a lot of small business minded people to have opportunity to get a good start and figure out what their niche is, if, if their original plan doesn't work, and then branch out into something bigger. I agree, we, we have this necessity to, to push for economic development here and, and grow our tax base and this is a perfect opportunity to do it, I believe.
Gotcha. Councilman Henderson, need me to repeat?
No, I'm still good. I'm still good. I remember this one. I've actually answered it several times in the last few weeks. In regards to the public market, this was presented to council a few, a couple of years ago, I believe, and it had overwhelming support from council. It's, it's everything that everybody up here has said. This is something that has never been done in Dickinson. There's no question that downtown area Dickinson needs revitalization. I spoke earlier about the Dickinson Bayou. This is, they're talking about building it right above the Dickinson boat ramp. Our mayor's been working with the county and other organizations to get grants to rebuild the, the Dickinson boat ramp because that, I don't, I'm assuming everybody realizes that's the only public access to Dickinson Bayou in Dickinson. So putting that, that facility right there basically expands the entire boat ramp area, expands the bayou. It's, it's a, it's a cog and it's a wheel in the, in the big scheme of things and I'm supporting it very strongly. Now, as with everything, there's always a caveat. I've been in project management for over 20 years and I understand execution plans. Any project must have an execution plan. Every business must have a business plan. I will not allow this project to spend more tax dollars if I cannot see that there is a good execution plan that shows that this project will be a success. I understand every project has its challenges and I will support it through those challenges. But ultimately, the men and women that have been working on this, I give them all the credit in the world, their hearts are in it and I, I want to support them completely. But we must have an effective execution plan that shows that this, this business will not become an albatross on the, the city's neck. We will not be subsidizing this entity. I, we have, if you've heard it once, you've probably heard it 50 times already today. We have limited resources to get a lot of things done and we must be very, very fiscally responsible with our funds. So I'm supporting it completely, but I really want to see what they can present to us to show how it's going to function. And I pray that it's exactly as what everybody's described and, and we move forward and three or four years from now, we're all high-fiving each other going, look how beautiful it is. Thank you.
All right. And give a hand to all of our candidates, if y'all would here today. As I said, I wanted to get us out close to 1:00 as, as close as possible. We're a little after it right now. We have offered each of the candidates two to three minutes. Feel free not to use up the full time, but you are open to that. But first off, as I said, even though he is unopposed, Councilman Wally Dietz is going to make a pitch to you here.
Thanks, TJ. I almost wished I had a candidate so I could talk longer. An opponent, I meant, yeah, okay. Well, anyway, thanks to the chamber, thanks to I-45 Now for hosting this and moderating. One thing you've heard, or one thing you haven't heard is that the city's budget is right about $19 million. A large part of that is.
When the mic closes?
Oh, okay. Yeah, a large part of, well, the city's budget is give or take $19 million a year. A large part of that goes to public safety and emergency services. So it's important that we, we do generate additional revenue. And you've heard a lot of good talk about ideas on how to do that, but what I really wanted to talk about, since I don't have an opponent, is that our number one resource is Dickinson Bio. How many people in here have been down Dickinson Bio from Cemetery Road at the far west end to Gum Bio in the last five years? Show of hands. I'm seeing about six, seven. So I think that's what I've been finding out is that people don't really know what an asset that is. I was told five, five and a half years ago, when I first came on council, that Dickinson would never be a destination, but I argue that it can be. What we need to do is to tap into our biggest resource, which is Dickinson Bio. I've started a, a, a drive about six weeks ago to have planning and zoning in the Chamber of Commerce playing a key role in that, and also EDC to start looking at the, the Dickinson Bio and what changes we can ma, can make to land use that we can get the whole community to agree on. And you know, that's going to be a big, big job there, but to get people to agree on, this is acceptable to us. This is our vision for the bio. This, we want Dickinson to be a destination, it's a big part of it. You heard the market could be an anchor for it on this end. You've got the property at I-45, the EDC. Anyway, you've got, you've got anchors that, that are going in. What developers are looking for when they come here, and I personally talked to some of them, is that they're look, the first thing they ask is, well, what's your plan? If, if you don't have a plan and a vision that the community's agreed on ahead of time, they're not interested. They're entrepreneurs. They're spending money to make money and that's not a, not a sin. And we've run into some situations where, where people have come before council and were against it because a guy was going to make money off of an investment. That's it?
That's it. And it should point out, he did point out at the end, I've asked and they've all agreed to stay around for a little bit if you, if something you didn't hear up here. So we did draw earlier and candidates got to pick where the order they would go into. And so starting off with his final pitch to you, and feel free if you want to stand or sit, however you want to do it. Sean Skipworth, we'll go first. Sean Skipworth, we'll go first, you have up to three minutes here.
Yeah.
Mine's the official one.
That's fine. So, I, I might jump on the table here to get more attention since I'm first, but I, I do have a pitch, I would like to start by saying something that I didn't plan to say. So, when I, when I came here earlier and I heard discussion of this some at the council meeting Tuesday night, there was some discussion of, of a mailer or some kind of flyer that went out and I'm, I'm guessing at this point, people are talking about a mailer that I sent out and, and this seems to have upset some people, so I, I want to address that. I, I've heard up here from our incumbents, a lot of defensiveness and I think that's unfortunate and I do understand it though, people, people get very critical and people come out and say things. People can be very unreasonable, as I said, but some had said that the tone of, of what, of this mailer was, was aggressive, it, it was aggressive and, but let me be clear, I think we have to be aggressive. There, there is no indictment of anybody over anything, everybody is doing their best. Earlier, Scott had talked about city council failing, I failed at things a lot in my life, that's okay, that, that, that happens, but it's not a personal indictment, everybody has the best intentions and everybody's trying their best and everybody has the best interest at heart, but, but sometimes you do need to take a step back. So, that, that said, I'll, I'll kind of go into the stuff that I had planned to say a little bit more. I think what, what I hearing from talking to people is that people want us to be more proactive and not so reactive, that we don't have to wait until streets or drainage is crumbling to fix things. But more than this, people seem to want to hear more about what is the vision for, for Dickinson. There's more than just chasing potholes and applying for grants and having lists of projects and things like this, that's a given, that's something that we expect any city to do, any city leaders to do, but we have to be bold and we do have to have visions, we, we have to be aggressive and advocating for the city and we're at a critical moment where we have expansions over on, on I forty-five, more traffic's going to be coming through and we got to carve out our place because we really have a very limited footprint in which to do that. So, really, what I, what I'm wanting to see here is to have a, a city, my vision is a city that's a community, where city council is out and is active, talking to people. That shouldn't just be an election time activity, that should be an all the time activity. We communicate with people, we listen to what they say, less than to tell them what we're up to and, and I think if we can do these things, if we can communicate, if we can have a vision, if we can focus things on, on customer service, on constituent service, then we're going to be in a, in a much improved place here in the future. So, I'm asking for your vote and thank you.
Thank you, Sean, appreciate it. Councilman King, you're up next, up to three minutes, sir.
My name is William King, I'm a city councilman, position six, and I'm asking for your support because as a council member, I've maintained integrity, loyalty and commitment. Twenty-seven years ago, I came to Dickinson, twenty-seven years ago, I came to Dickinson and got involved. John Mitchin was the mayor of the city of Dickinson, got involved with the school district, Leland Williams was the superintendent of schools, working with schools, working with the city and working with the community churches. That involvement allowed me to identify several projects, law enforcement, became a chaplain with the Dickinson Police Department, got involved with Magnolia Cemetery, did a beautification project. We don't talk often about our police department, but I've seen over the last sixteen years, our police department continue to improve, to build. Right now, it is a state recognized law enforcement agency. Our school is a recognized school district. We're doing great things in the city of Dickinson because we've honored our word to work with the community, to work with the city. Our water district as well, working with those entities that impact the citizens of Dickinson. Tony Bennett says that he left his heart in San Francisco. With Tony Bennett can leave his heart in San Francisco and William Henry King III can leave his heart in Dickinson. And my commitment is to the citizens of the city of Dickinson to continue to serve and provide the services as the leader of the city of Dickinson City Council, position six of the Dickinson City Council. Lastly, I do have a little more time as a preacher left, is that I believe we're going to continue to do street repair and street drainage. We've added a fire station to the east side, we've added fire trucks as well as ambulances, we work with the fire, volunteer firefighters to provide the services that they need. That collaboration, that communication is effective for continued city growth and as a citizen of the city of Dickinson myself, I pledge and promise to continue to serve to the best of my ability. You, as the citizens with the best fiduciary responsibilities of tax dollars and that which we've done, all the time, we don't talk about it, but we've not raised taxes in years and we've gotten the best with the tax dollars that we have. I will continue to do that project with public safety, public streets and public services. I dropped the mic.
Okay, I'm not stopping making fun of you, you were way lower than everybody else so far. Any case, yeah, yeah, you were way lower than everyone else, that pastor. H Scott, three, up to three minutes, sir.
All right, first of all, I want to thank the, the chamber for hosting this event. It, it's been a really good opportunity to see some of you guys face to face. So far, I've, I've crossed paths with Sean a couple of times out in neighborhoods, I've knocked on almost seven hundred doors, but the problem is you can't predict when people are going to be home and so, this has been a really good opportunity for you to hear a little bit about my ideas and my vision for the city. I want to tell you a little bit about why I'm running and, and I'll be honest, I'm running out of frustration, right? I'm running out of frustration on what I perceive to be a lack of progress on our street maintenance and repair and, and perception is reality a lot of times, especially if you ask voters around the city. I, I don't feel, and I think Sean, Sean kind of used this line, I, I had it written down so I feel a little bit like he stole it from me, but, but running around town, filling potholes is not a strategy and, and I live on thirty-fourth street, I, I encourage anybody to drive down thirty-fourth between California and Dickinson Avenue and you will see where they have filled the same twenty potholes thirty times over the last three years. That is money wasted, right? Instead of determining a long-term vision to fix that. And then, I always, you know, everybody likes to say that they have the worst street and I thought I had a pretty bad street and then I had a supporter invite, invite me to drive down Nevada Street. If you have not had the opportunity, go drive down Nevada Street and you will see how far we have let our maintenance slide and we really need a new, a new way to look at it. Another reason I'm running is out of frustration, again, with the, with the, with the drainage, you know? I've said, even before Harvey, I watch, every time it rains, I watch this line come closer and closer to my house, you know, and, and put Harvey to the side, you know? I, I'm tired of my wife and my neighbors being afraid of the rain and that, that's the reality of where we are. T J said it when we started this whole thing, we grip on to our, our car as we leave town with it raining and, and we've got to do something dramatic, we've got to do something aggressive in order to address that. You know, my opponent, he just, he said so himself earlier, he said that he's been on council for sixteen years. I think that that's too long, that, that doesn't have anything to do with him personally, it would be too long for me, I would feel that way about anybody. We have too many good leaders in this town to have the same seven people serve on council indefinitely. If that's the case, why have elections? We need new ideas, we need fresh leadership. Yes, okay, another thing is that, again, I'm not picking on Reverend King, but my estimation is he hasn't had an opponent in the last three elections and, and one of those elections was canceled because nobody had an opponent. I believe that the citizens of this city deserve to have choices in who they pick. That's all. My name's H Scott Aplley, I, I would appreciate your vote on election day, if you have any questions, I'm very easy to find and get ahold of, I look forward to seeing you guys on May fourth, thank you.
End time. Councilman Henderson, up to three minutes, sir.
Thank you very much, T J. First, again, thank you Chamber of Commerce for putting this on, T J, thank you very much for hosting it. I'm not going to lie, I was a little apprehensive because I don't like having prepared speeches and thank God I didn't, but we have a lot of things going in the city, I've been very proud, I've only been in this town for twenty years, I was told in another six years I can apply for citizenship to Texas, I'm working on that. But I grew up in a small town in southeast Missouri and it's a beautiful little town. Missouri was not where I was supposed to be, I came to Texas and I, I landed in Dickinson in nineteen ninety-nine and I've lived in Dickinson longer than I've lived anywhere my entire life. This is my home, this is a place I love dearly, it's passionate to me to do everything I can to see this city come forward. Everything that our opponents have said, gentlemen, you're, you're not wrong, there's times that we have failed, there's times that we've made decisions that weren't the right one, but it wasn't for lack of trying, it may have been for lack of information, may have been just a result of the situation of the time, but it was never, ever for lack of trying. Again, we have a lot of things going on in the next eighteen months to three years, I would never, ever want to go through another Harvey, but I would prefer to look at my glasses half full and say, "Okay, that was not fun, let's see where we can go from here." And I think, as Councilman King said it, look at the room you're standing in. This room didn't get the water in it, but downstairs completely flooded, the store next door completely flooded, these places are more beautiful now than they were before and they were pretty doggone nice before too. There's a lot of people that have been built back in the cities and I think their homes look wonderful. As I've driven around the city since Harvey, not just because of the election, there are a lot of homes that are still under construction, there's a lot of homes that have for sale signs on them. Our city is sitting at a crossroads, I'm absolutely convinced, we have an opportunity, opportunities are in front of us to do great things and I am absolutely optimistic that we can do these things. I think the leadership in our council, they, it's seven people up there that I am very proud to say I disagree with often, but they disagree with me too and we have an intelligent conversation and we've come to the best conclusion we can have, there is no yes men or women on this council, there's people that put their hearts and souls into this, that stay awake at night thinking about it. So, I'm Bruce Henderson, I endorse this message. I really would like to get your vote, thank you much.
Thank you, Councilman, and, and Kevin, I have, we're going to have something right afterwards, so don't want to get up and leave right away, we have two more business items, but Kevin, up to three minutes for you, for your final pitch.
I don't, I don't know what you thought about my comments while I've been up here and I'll, I'll let you know, I am not a politician, I'm, I'm just a resident, I'm a citizen and I'm a patron of the city. Myself, I've had a lot of dealings with actual city hall for what it is that I do and I, I see opportunities for improvement all the time and some of them are procedural and, and some of them are not, some of them, some of them are just, the way we talk to our, our citizens when they come in, the front door and so, there's some things that bother me and I'd, I'd like to be a part of a different change, a different perspective of being on the inside. I, I want to get on the inside so I can share my perspective on the outside and hopefully make a difference, a, a positive difference for each and every single person of our city and for each and every prospective business that wants to be here. I, I want to be that friend and not a foe. So, I, I do want to just take a moment to thank our, our current council members and mayor for their service. It is, it is much appreciated and not without sacrifice and I can only say thank you. I, I don't have a rough thing to say about any member of our council, I, I don't think you accomplished anything by doing so, but, and I would like to thank I forty-five now, Marais and the chamber for hosting this event, thank you so much.
Thank you. Give a hand to the candidates again, wait up please. And Pastor King, you actually had the shortest speech of them all, he beat you, you, you beat him by two seconds, so I just, just, I've been making fun of you here today. The council election is not the only thing on the ballot that's, that fits for Dickinson. You heard a lot about the roads on there, there is a quarter cent sales tax and Councilman Wilson was going to address that here, we'll give him a couple of minutes to remind you of that.
First off is, I don't know if I really need this, anyway, it needs to be cleared up that this is not a new tax, this is a tax that, that you, the voters and everybody else out there gets to decide whether we're keeping it for another four years or not, that was done by the state legislation. So, this is a voice that we need y'all to handle with, we need this sales tax, quarter cent sales tax, which is half of the half cent sales tax to be reinstated because we use this money for new streets. Now, when I say new streets, there's been a reference to potholes and stuff like that, this money has been used so far for concrete streets. There's never been a time in the city of Dickinson, and I've lived here since nineteen seventy-seven, that we have done this many concrete streets since this tax was passed. It's very vital, is, some of it can be used actually for drainage, we found out, so it's very important and remember this, this sales tax is, if somebody buys a hamburger at the freeway, they are contributing to this sales tax, this is a very vital piece of how the city operates. I'd like to thank everybody, I'd like to thank T J for letting me bring this up, I thought Wally was going to bring it up, but he only gave him three minutes, he didn't have time. Anyway, thank y'all.
All right, thank you, Councilman, I appreciate it. Again, give a hand to everybody there and again, and to follow up, because I was going to say something on that, the, the quarter cent sales tax is already in place, this is a reauthorization of what's already in place here, the, the state requires this come up before the voters on a regular basis so it doesn't just stay there, that way you can determine whether it's been used effectively or not. Early voting, as we mentioned, started on Monday, it continues, you actually can, if you'd like to drive down to the island and the weather will be nice this weekend, if you want to vote Saturday or Sunday, the polls are open at the Justice Center down on the island, you have early voting here in, in the area, there, anywhere in Galveston County you can go through tomorrow and then next week as well, the polls are open on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth from seven to seven. The weekend voting at the Justice Center, seven AM to seven PM on Saturday and one PM to six PM on Sunday, so after you get out of church, you can head over there as well.